Do you have any preliminary words for us with respect to?
I certainly can. It's 7:00.
It is, but I noticed that we're one short on councilors. The administrator had successfully entered his password. I don't know.
Excuse me, Bob. Tony has his hand up, if you can hear me. I'm not sure why he has his hand up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't. Okay, Tony?
There he is, coming in now.
I see him, but he's muted for some reason. Tony, you'll have to unmute yourself. I believe you do that by holding your spacebar down.
Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes. Muted himself again, so I guess he's muted. All right, do we have our?
We do. It's 7:01 PM. We have a quorum of the town council. Councilors Anderson, Materonis, Moore, and Mushin will call to order this meeting of the town council. And the first item of business is approval of the minutes of May 7.
Councilor Materonis, motion to approve the minutes of May 7, unless anybody has any comments or questions.
Second that motion.
The motion is made by Councilor Materonis, seconded by Councilor Moore. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Materonis?
Aye.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Mushin votes aye, 4-0. Next item of business is announcements. We have two announcements. One is that the police department has announced re-initiation of two services that were suspended due to the early stages of COVID-19. Those two are VIN checks, vehicle identification number checks, background checks, and fingerprinting procedures. Both of those procedures have, both of those services have special procedures associated with it. A person wishing to use either the VIN or BCI service needs to contact the police department. And this begins May 26, which would be Tuesday next, that that service would be available. It is available both for citizens of Little Compton as well as elsewhere. The second announcement is, due to the current COVID-19 restrictions, the annual Memorial Day parade and exercises were forced to be canceled. On behalf of the town council, I encourage all citizens to remember on this Memorial Day weekend those who paid the ultimate price and have fallen while serving our great country.
Councilman Materonis, I had the town clerk put this in there because, you know, we're not going to have Memorial Day parade. And I just want to thank all our men and women that lost their lives. And I would also like to take a minute, moment of silence for these heroes that have lost their lives, if possible.
Thank you. Let's begin that moment of silence now. Thank you for that and for, to those who have, whose family members have been lost.
Thank you, Bob.
The next item is department head reports. The one department head report we have to consider is that of the Public Works Department.
Motion to place the Public Works Department report on file unless anybody has any comments or questions on that report?
Second?
Motion is made by Councilor Materonis, seconded by Councilor Moore. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Materonis?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Thank you. The next item is that of old business, a letter from the United Congregational Church regarding the summer fair and road race. We have received information from the church that the fair and road race are canceled for 2020, which was the reason for its continuation. Is there a motion to place this on file?
Don't move, Mr. Materonis.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilor Materonis, seconded by Moore. Discussion on that? All in favor? Anderson?
Aye.
Materonis?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Thank you. The next is an application for a mobile vendor permit for Weatherlow Farms LLC to operate a mobile vehicle selling flowers in Little Compton. This was continued from five, from our last meeting in order for me to seek advice from the solicitor. Is there discussion?
Could I make a comment on this, Councilor Materonis? I did meet with Ryan. I saw him down Secana Point. I went over to him, chatted to him about this. I said the concern was that there would be a liability if they went on the town property. I asked him where he thought he was going to park his vehicle so we would have an understanding where that was going to be. He did mention he had talked to somebody over by the Ock Cafe. And I said, well, why don't you ask the people at the Ock Cafe if you can park in front of there? You'll have the foot traffic. You'll have foot traffic from Boba's and the Commons lunch. It'll be out of the way. And he thought he would investigate that situation. But after speaking with Council Mushin, I guess this gentleman only wants to do it for two hours a week, or this lady, whichever, wants to do it for two hours a week. So I think if, I'll make a motion that he speak to the chief of police and tell him where he wants to park and just make sure the chief of police feels it's okay.
So your motion is to grant the permit on the basis of the conditions you've cited?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Councilor Moore?
The motion is made by Councilor Materonis, seconded by Councilor Moore. Is there further discussion?
This is Councilmember Anderson. I will make a comment. And then I do recall that our motion last week did seek an opinion from the town solicitor because there was some question about that, whether this was appropriate. But I will note that with regard to conditions on a license such as this, that the new ordinance that we adopted last October, which we adopted after some discussion, but we were compelled to do it partly because we had to adopt a new fee structure, come into compliance with the state, the new state licensing system. We have conditions in the ordinance. And I'm a little concerned whether we can add conditions other than those that are in the ordinance. I'm looking for instance, 6-1.4, that is the heading for limitations. It says, this is a, an MMV licenses, I understand that, right?
Right, it's a mobile merchandise vendor.
Right. So it, one of the conditions, there are a number of conditions. I'll read some of them. Subsection B, the maximum number of MMV permits that we can issue are three, unless changed by vote of the town council. I'm assuming that this complies with that provision.
It does. This is our first.
And then there are limitations on hours between 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. But the two that may be relevant to this discussion and this motion is subsection D, MFEs, which are mobile food establishment licenses, which is the one isn't. And MMVs are to be stationary while selling. An MFE, that is a food license, may be no closer than 200 feet to any permanent established serving food. But this ordinance does not appear to apply the same limitation to an MMV. So I guess my question is whether we can, we didn't expand the, those limitations in the ordinance, which we had some liberty to do, as I recall. I guess I'm just asking whether we can add additional limitations that go beyond the ordinance. That's my question. So that also maybe the town solicitor can address that one as well.
May I answer that? May I give my input, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. When we were asked by the state to establish this ordinance for mobile food vendors and mobile, we added the mobile merchandise vendors. We were instructed at that time that if we had limitations on where in town they could not go, it would have to be in the ordinance as enacted. We couldn't add it as an extra when issuing the license. So for the food vendor, we have that restriction. I'm not so sure how tightly that connects to the mobile merchandise because we're the ones who created that. But we are very limited with the food vendor.
Solicitor, thank you. Solicitor, would you have a comment?
Yes, I did send down an opinion unfortunately kind of late yesterday.
Yes, no, I have your opinion.
Good. So I stand by the opinion.
Yeah.
And in terms of the limitation of two hours a week, it seems to be entirely practical. So why not try it?
Right. My response was also to say that we have received from the applicant a statement indicating his preference, which is, which would make him comport with subparagraph D in that he would wish to remain stationary while selling, as required. And the place that he suggests is in the commons. And he said he would use open public parking, or if we dedicated a space that we wanted him to be in, he would occupy that space. And so as not to create a burden on the parking, we would be willing to limit sales to once a week for a period of no more than two hours. So we have a once a week, two-hour parking space at our pleasure, I guess I'd say, that he has agreed to adhere to.
Councilor Materonis again, that's why I, in my motion, I said that he needs to talk to the chief of police to make sure he's going to park in an area that the chief of police thinks is appropriate. I don't think there's anybody better equipped to tell a vendor where to park than the chief of police or one of his officers. So that's why I put that in my motion.
Okay. Councilor Anderson, are you, do you still have concerns with additional requirements that we're laying out?
I guess my question is, so the motion that Gary made, you think is appropriate?
I do. I mean, it's during these times. I mean, I think Gary did the right thing. He approached them, limited in scope. It's 168 hours in a week. You've got two hours to sell flowers. I think that's fine.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion then before us is to approve this mobile vending permit.
Merchandise.
Merchandise vendor permit. Thank you. Let's take a vote. Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Materonis?
Aye.
Councilor Moore?
Aye.
Councilor Mushin votes aye. There's four ayes. Thank you. The next item of business is continued discussion of alternatives for financial town meeting. By way of review, you'll be perhaps aware that Councilor Anderson, town clerk Carol Wardell, and myself, to a lesser extent, have been involved with a group that is developing options and opportunities for replacing for those communities who are not able to conduct an in-person, quorum satisfying, indoor financial town meeting, what other options might be. And the decision of that group has been to pursue a multiple series or a multiple package of possible solutions in order to achieve that. We have looked at a number of those, and Councilor Anderson has forwarded a particular document for our consideration. I think what would be helpful is if we listen to this and at least come out of this discussion with a setting of a date for the financial town meeting. I'm going to suggest that it be in the latter part of June. Councilor Anderson and I have had an opportunity to discuss that. It comports with what he's going to talk to us about. But I'd like us to establish a date and have a discussion now as to what form it might take. We may not be able to decide on that. In fact, it may be, each day as it's unveiled, we find new developments from the state with respect to limitations and/or relaxations. So I believe this package approach is the right way to go. Get the General Assembly to do as many things as possible to give us as many options as possible. Councilor Anderson?
Well, let me, I should say that Bob and I both participated in one of these calls today with the Renile League and Citizens and Towns, where we had the most recent news about where we stand, including a sort of omnibus kind of legislation designed to give communities as many options as possible. The town solicitor from Tiverton is fashioning that, but it won't be submitted, he said, until next week. And even then, the legislature, I guess, is supposed to be, start to meet in June, but that is still uncertain. That is the specific shape of that legislation and when or even if it will be adopted. We learned also during today that the idea that had been proposed and as of last week, we thought rejected of offering an opportunity for some kind of socially-distanced, perhaps outdoor meeting. If that option had been closed, there was some discussion today that the governor and the Department of Health are giving it a second look. But again, as of now, we don't know if that would be so. And if it were so, whether we could meet the conditions. So those things are still up in the air. I won't go over all my memos, but my concern is, and I agree with Bob about that perhaps to keep our options open, we should schedule a date late in June. It's already, what, May 21st? The clock is ticking on the arrival of the next fiscal year. And I will say, I mentioned this to Bob, that I personally think that if we can, if there's a legal and practical way to do it that respects the voters' rights under their charter, if we can find a way to do that without just biding our time and hoping if something else comes along, I think we should be pursuing, begin to be pursuing specific options now. And if we can do it, I think we should try because some of the legislative solutions in this proposed bill, in effect, push some of these decisions into next year. So my first principle personally is if we can find a way to do it this year, we should, scheduling a town meeting late in June, but at least keep that option alive. I will just go on to say that, as you know, and what I describe in there is, I have been investigating as one of these options, the possibility of conducting a virtual town meeting. As I've told to people, everything I know about Zoom is six weeks old, seven weeks old, but I know I'm not alone in that. But other towns have been investigating this. Richmond this week decided to hold their financial town meeting by remote means on June 8. All these towns are different. Their town meeting is quite a bit like ours, but they have a 25-person quorum requirement and regular attendance, I was told. I talked to the town clerk this morning on the order of 75 people. So that barrier is different than ours. As I reported in my memo, I tried out a sort of mock town meeting with about 15 people. It was an interesting experience. I think personally, again, that there are some obstacles, but that this might be feasible. I will only say that if other town officials want to give it a try and small experiment, I'm willing to share my experience with the rest of you. Tonight, we're using the Zoom webinar option, which is different than the meeting option, which is by some recommended as the, as a more appropriate means of conducting this kind of meeting, this platform we're using tonight, or this option we're using tonight. So that's basically my story. I would support President Mushin's proposal to schedule a meeting, but at the same time, I think we would have to sort of, among ourselves, begin to investigate some of these specific options on our own because I'm not sure the state's going to bail us out in a timely way. I had been hopeful that we could learn something tomorrow that would change this. But I do think that we can take the initiative, as Richmond has done, and perhaps be preparing our own solution. You know, I've offered my own, you know, two-bit legal opinion about that I think we may have the legal authority under various existing emergency legislation to do this anyway. So that's my story. And as I say, I would support Bob's proposal and would also offer to work with any one of you who wants to investigate virtual options.
Councilor Mushin, you have the town moderator that would like to speak. And there's also a notation in the chat box.
Mr. Moderator, please proceed.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
I would agree with Bob's proposal. It makes, I think it makes sense to set a date. Obviously, the form of the meeting is sort of still to be determined. However, I think there's a strong possibility that if we do an in-person outdoor meeting or if we do a virtual meeting, there's the strong possibility that we don't achieve a quorum, given both the limitations of technology, people's potential lack of comfort with it, people's concerns about attending a, even a properly socially-distanced gathering. So although I think it makes sense to proceed with setting a date and figuring out the details of how that meeting will be held as things progress, I think we also need to have a Plan B because we could very well hold one of these types of meetings, not have a quorum, and be back to where we are today with no ability to pass a budget and a levy. So I would say, I don't know if, feel you have the right, the power under the emergency powers for the council to ultimately pass the budget and the tax levy. But I do think that's something we need to be prepared for just in case.
Councilman Materonis, you know, as I've stated previously, on a visual aspect of it, we have a lot of elderly people in town that I'm not sure they're going to be able to get onto a computer or have a computer or be able to get onto Zoom. And if they did, how will we know that we had a quorum? And as far as an outdoor situation, same scenario is how many of these elderly people are going to take a risk to come and do social distancing from other people in town? So I have to concur with moderator that I know we have always had guidelines, but in extraordinary circumstances, we have to do extraordinary measures. And my recommendation, if we can't get anything done by June 19, is to allow either the council president to do it by his emergency action or else have the council board on the budget. I mean, we're all going from 593 to 596, so it's not much of an increase. So it's not like anything's contentious. The school committee's on board with the budget. Budget committee's okay with the budget. I think the town council's okay with the budget. So the last ditch vote, nothing happens on June 19, I would recommend that we just allow the, either the council president or the councilors in whole to approve the budget as submitted by the budget committee.
The chairman of the budget committee would like to speak.
Mr. Croll, please.
George Croll, Budget Committee. I think we should set a date for a financial town meeting. I've looked at, I believe, the notes that Dick Humphrey had as far as giving the council and the president of the council emergency powers that they have now. And I was wondering how Dick feels if, if we don't have a town meeting, how he feels that the council, because the budget is passed by the budget committee, we had virtually no questions at the public hearing, it's only two cents on the tax rate, how we would feel if the council just ran the budget the way it is?
I actually think it'd be just fine if the council ran with the budget as suggested and approved by the budget committee. I mean, that gave the townspeople at least one, if not two, opportunities to weigh in. And I think during these times, I've spent a lot of time studying this. Essentially, Chief Justice Rehnquist said a long time ago, in times of war, "The courts are inclined to bend the law in the government's favor during a time of hostilities." I agree with that. And in particular, we have a council of both parties. And both parties have participated in the process. And in the past, I don't remember, eight or 10 years, generally, the budget is passed in one swoop. So I think it would be the right thing to do to give the council, or I guess Bob Mushin is the council, at least now, to do that. So I think with a two-step process, one is you might consider having meetings in late June, or you might consider having the council tonight, passing the budget committee's recommended budget.
The, Councilor Mushin, the degree to which the various options have been discussed and floated suffers from the fact that it hasn't gotten any legislative response yet. And I think if we, if we point our sails toward, let's say, the 23rd, and we continue to explore the options, we still have steps that we need to take. For example, we have to get municipal finance to buy our proposed advertisement. We have to get it in the newspaper. We have to do all those kinds of steps regardless of who's going to approve it. So I would say there is not that urgency tonight. Certainly, there's, we should consider all possibilities and talk about them all. And we don't need, we don't need to decide it tonight, but I think all of these things are certainly on the table. But what we do need to decide is that we're pointed toward a date such that we can get the other wheels in motion and print the cover of the budget committee report, get the budget committee report mailed, all those sorts of things that are going to, and get the ads in the paper, that are going to take time.
If I can make a comment?
Yes, Councilman.
I think it's appropriate to use a date tonight. I don't think we need to go much beyond that right now, especially due to the points you brought up. We do have a little bit of time. There might be some legislation if the state legislature comes back into session. And additionally, I think it would be, I think it's important that we give the people here in the county opportunity to speak up about the budget. You know, I know they have had opportunities in the past with the budget committee, but they generally have the town meeting as well to bring up those concerns that they might have. So I think other opportunities in the next six weeks would be important for the town and for our systemic government here.
Councilor Mushin?
Yes.
You have the chairman of the budget committee, the town moderator, and another member of the budget committee. the budget committee, Mr. Goulart, who would all like to speak.
All right. Mr. Goulart.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so, so, yeah, I've just been listening here. I mean, I mean, obviously, I, you know, part of the budget committee voted for the budget. I'm okay with the budget. But I, I just hope that, you know, a considerable more people, you know, show up to the FTM than the, than our hearing. And I hope we, you know, that you guys kind of give a chance to try to get a quorum in some, in some fashion before, you know, just sort of just passing it yourselves. And certainly, I mean, I know you guys aren't saying you're going to do it tonight, which I, I, I think is good. Like Andrew was saying, just, you know, kind of give people a bit more of a chance to know that it's, if you're going to, you know, to do that, to know that that's how you're going to pass it. Just, yeah, it's, yeah. So that's just kind of, that's, that's my, my two cents.
That would be basically following the process that we normally do, that is advising people through a written document that they receive in their mailbox so they have an opportunity to react. And then, to your point, were we to choose to do it with any one of a host of the possible options, they could all be with that, that preface as the people who had the chance to see it.
Yeah, like, like, you know, for example, like with the Zoom, I mean, you know, I know that, you know, there, there may be some elderly people who have a hard time with it, but you, you know, you can call in from a landline, you can, there's, there's different ways to, to, to sign on, and I, and I think people are becoming more, more comfortable with it. It's, you know, I don't think it should be necessarily discounted as a, as a possibility. Just, again, my, my two cents.
Chairman Kroll, did you have a question or a comment?
I agree with our moderator, Scott Morrison. I don't see any way at this point that you could get a quorum to a town meeting even in June with the elderly population that we have. And I am totally against a Zoom meeting with our elderly population. Most of them don't even have computers. I do not think that would be fair to them. I do think we need to mail the budget report out, come up with a date at this point, at least get the information out to the voters.
Moderator.
Yeah, I'll leave it up to the council as to which direction we go in terms of the form of the meeting, but I think although Chairman, President Mushin's suggestion of June twenty-third is thirty, whatever, it's thirty-three days away. If we're going to pursue holding a particularly a virtual meeting, if we want to have any shot at having a quorum, which I think will be a challenge, there's going to be a significant education process involved. So although that's thirty-three days away, I don't think we can wait until the week before to decide to do a Zoom meeting. So we've got to have, I think, a roadmap as to if that's what the council decides. There's got to be a roadmap of kind of steps that need to be done, education, et cetera. Otherwise, I think we're going to waste our time.
And would you say that that's the only one of those solutions that would require that?
Well, I think an outdoor meeting, you know, other than the fact that you're not in the gym, you know, everything else, all the customs and rules would be the same. As I mentioned before, I'm not overly confident we'd get a quorum at that type of meeting either, but I think there's much less of an education process there. Obviously, telling people where to go and social distancing and any other changes we or procedure policies we need to put in place would have to be educated. But I think with a virtual meeting, there will be a significant learning curve for people if we want any chance of getting a hundred and fifty-some people participating.
Well, that's the point of my question. I think the virtual meeting uniquely has that requirement. I don't think council budget requires training of people, et cetera. I don't think that a regular meeting in whatever fashion, whether, whether indoors, outdoors, or however, would require that. So if I'm distilling down what we're saying, were we to choose tonight a date for the meeting, the urgent requirement then is, in order to keep the virtual solution viable, we need to begin exercising and training.
Councilman Materonis, if comments are all done, I'll make the motion to hold the...
They're not all done. Counselor Anderson has had his hand up.
Yeah, I've got a chat as well. Go ahead.
I'll wait.
Am I speaking, Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
There's a lot of points there. I, I am totally opposed, totally opposed to the notion that at this stage, the council should consider adopting a budget on its own. That's a last resort. And it should be pointed out that this is one of the options that is intended to be included in the proposed legislation. That is, there are a number of options that are, that involve extending the tax levy from the current year, allowing the council by ordinance or resolution to take such a step. But I think it's way premature for the council, you know, and I'm advocating a generous application of emergency option, powers that we may have, but we would only use those if we, if we'd exhausted our other options. And I think the last resort, it's, I will speak for myself, it's somewhat self-serving for us to pat ourselves on the back about what a great job we're doing with the budget. The whole point of town meeting is for the voters to decide that. I hope that they agree that we've come in with a good budget, but I don't want to presume that on their behalf. So I, I do think we have to bend over backwards to make an effort that may fail. It may fail to get a quorum. But in that time, legislation may come along that would give us the clear authority rather than to adopt an authority to, if we have to, for the council to do it at the end of the fiscal year, at the beginning of the fiscal year. So I, and I would only add with regard to the, the possibility, the possibility of achieving a, a quorum. I'll give the example in Richmond, when I talked to the town clerk today, that they were getting enthusiastic response to their, to their approach from people who said that they had previously had a hard time attending town meeting. So the, the outreach that we would make, the means of outreach that we have by means of social media and other forums, and a plea to our citizens that it would be important to participate in order to maintain the continuity of services, I think we would have, I think we could perhaps get a quorum. We have thirty-one people participating tonight in a council meeting. So people are showing up for these. So again, I would, I would support, I, Carrie had made a motion, I'm all for scheduling a meeting, but I do think, and I recall that our last meeting, it was suggested that we create a group, a smaller group, to consider some of these options. That was two weeks ago. We haven't done it, so we've already lost some time on whatever they are. Some of us have to sit down, make a list, and prepare. So I, again, I will support scheduling a date, but I do think either an initial motion or, or change to this, that we should take some other specific action now with regard to beginning to make some specific plans for options for how we will conduct a meeting on June twenty-third or whatever.
Budget committee member Goulart would like to speak again.
Yeah, I mean, I just have a question. I'm, I just, I guess what I don't understand is why a, I guess, a town financial meeting done via Zoom would be less fair to, you know, you mentioned elderly or whoever than the town council passing the budget via Zoom. I mean, I understand that the quorum, one needs a quorum, one, you know, might necessarily not, but, you know, again, I, you know, I would put in, let's, let's at least try to go to quorum first, because, because again, I just don't see how that's any less fair than what, what kind of somebody you guys are proposing.
Well, that could very well be among the things that we attempt in the next two weeks is the, the, a mock financial town meeting in which we seek to establish a quorum of people and see what we get, see if that, that is possible. Citizen Roger Lord has also come in with a comment. It's important to note, many people in town don't have computers or ways of running Zoom. So we might find that, that in fact, we have a whole host of people who do feel that they're limited, or conversely, we find that we've got ways to solve that for them. So I agree with the urgency to continue the planning because, again, in my book, the thing that requires planning is the virtual meeting. The other forms of meeting, either approval by the council or approval by a traditional meeting are well exercised, and we could do that on relatively short notice without a lot of, lot of prior work. But this other approach will require work. So the motion originally was for the date only, or could you...
Yeah, Councilman Materonis, I'll make a motion to hold a financial town meeting on June twenty-third in whatever form that we committee decides to hold it. That'll be the end of the motion. And when I suggested the council approve it, there was no way until after June twenty-third as a stopgap, because after June twenty-third, you're only going to have seven or eight days before the first of July comes for new fiscal year. So if it doesn't happen on June twenty-third, we're not going to have much time to hem and haw and try to figure something else out. So that would be my motion to set the date, June twenty-third, for the financial town meeting in 2020.
Counselor Moore, second.
The motion is made by Counselor Materonis, seconded by Moore, to hold the financial town meeting on June twenty-third.
Before you move on for a roll call, I have two hands that are up for just asking to talk. You have Chairman George Kroll, and you have a citizen, Abigail Brooks.
George Kroll, Budget Committee. We have to print the cover of the budget committee report. Even if you pick the date of June twenty-third, what do you say? Do you say it is a financial town meeting at the school, or is it going to be a Zoom meeting? We have to come up with some, something for the cover.
Right. I think that's something that this smaller group needs to decide, but I don't think it's impossible to provide two possible solutions and we later promulgate what the right answer is.
Fine.
Yes, Abigail.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that Zoom is also available by phone, so that there's a phone option for Zoom for people who are not comfortable with computer access. Just wanted to bring that up as part of your consideration.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote on the motion?
Bob, can I just ask one question before you? I'm happy with the motion, and I don't want to complicate it. Do you anticipate then that you will convene some kind of smaller group fairly soon to begin discussing some of these other options?
Yes, I thought we would cover that in a second motion just to get this one finished. Right, exactly. All right. Any other comments, host? Town clerk, do you have any? Thank you. Then we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Materonis.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Or in favor of the scheduling of the financial town meeting on the twenty-third. Now, this smaller group would probably need to include Counselor Anderson and some other counselor, I don't know who that would be, and the town clerk. I suppose the three of us have the, the experience with the group. We're also closest to the process of what happens at the state level. But the other part of this, the, the mock meeting is going to take, it would seem to be more people and perhaps a different team.
Well, I do think that, if I may, Larry Anderson, if we're going to consider, if we're going to prepare for several options, in any case, the town moderator has to, would be, would should be among this group. I mean, he, the moderator is going to run. He should be...
The device that is created.
He did have his hand up to talk.
Yeah, the town clerk, the town moderator, perhaps the chairman of the budget committee. By charter, the budget committee presents the budget. Those are other folks I think might realistically, and perhaps a town solicitor, or to have the town solicitor at hand to guide us if need be. So those would be other people I think need to be part of the conversation.
Yes, moderator.
Yeah, I was, Larry, basically stole my thunder, but I would say that absolutely would want to be part of that group, you know.
Then the moderator, the budget committee chair, Counselor Anderson, and the solicitor and clerk in support roles.
Well, are we talking about a discussion of all the alternatives or the virtual alternative? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. I think we could, it could be the same group. That's what I'm saying, that the same folks have to, have to guide this, those, all those parties in a way, council, budget committee, clerk, moderator, whatever approach we take, those are the people who have to be involved. So I don't think we necessarily have to go down two paths. The virtual thing can just be discussed as part of it and organized if we want. That would be my, rather than overcomplicate it. And at our last meeting, we discussed your doing this under your emergency authority. It would be up to you. We wouldn't necessarily have to take a vote. This is going to be sort of an emergency operation, so I would be comfortable with you acting to create a group as you thought appropriate, you know, including those folks. So that would be my opinion.
Maybe I am making this more complicated. I'm simply saying that the only area that I see needs extensive working out is the virtual. All the other solutions are relatively instantaneous in the sense that if we're able to conduct a normal financial town meeting, we call it and it, and it operates normally. We don't have to exercise things. If we had to do one with social distancing and face clause, that too is not rocket science. We could probably do that in rather short order if we found out, for example, on the twentieth of June that suddenly we can have a financial, well, it's a little ridiculous, but, you know, if we found out very late in the game that we could have a financial town meeting, we could simply say, make it so, and, and do that. There's all sorts of logistics that have to go into it, but my point is, we don't have to figure out how to do it, whereas the virtual one we do. Right?
Well, I will say, again, we don't know what might be permitted to do. I will say, having looked at the current Department of Health regulations for larger groups that they have permitted now as of May, of May seventh or eighth, those requirements are pretty extensive in terms of things like taking temperatures. It is not, it is, it is a different level of preparation and, and compliance than, than a, than just a little more complicated financial town meeting. So I do, I do think we should be discussing that now and looking at the real logistics of it. That's why I'm thinking that it's not that simple, I don't think, to hold a socially distanced financial town meeting.
Counselor Mushen, we have another hand up to speak from Lieutenant Abigail Brooks.
Yes.
All right, just thinking about an outdoor meeting, I'm thinking about a tent being needed. And you'd have to order a tent because you wouldn't know what the weather was going to be if that was ultimately the decision. So I agree, there are complications with any alternative.
Okay. Would someone wish to frame a motion that appoints a set of people to be that core group? Or would you like me to do that?
Personally, I'm not on the council, but I like the group that you already named. I think you chose the appropriate people to do that research.
Yes, thank you. Would you repeat that motion?
I would offer a motion to authorize the council president, I could say, acting under his emergency authority to convene a small working group of his selection to consider and prepare for various financial town meeting options.
Is there a second?
Second, Counselor Mataronis.
Motion has been made by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Mataronis for the council president to convene such a group as we spoke of in order to prepare for the multiple options. All in favor? Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Aye.
Mushen, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item of discussion is a discussion of Article 5 in the warrant. Article 5 of the warrant reads, "To authorize, per Section 103, the town council to enter into negotiations for the purpose of acquiring property or a portion of said property for municipal purposes located at Plant 40, Lot 83, and to further authorize the council to pursue financing options as may be needed, but not to exceed limitations of Article 1." Counselor Anderson, you wish to have a discussion on that?
Yes, I, as I was thinking about the different ways we might hold a town meeting, this article caught my attention for a couple of reasons. And the article, I'm going to read it, is Article 5, which is on our warrant as approved by the council and is in the Budget Committee, the draft Budget Committee, as approved by the Budget Committee. And I'm going to read it. It says, "To authorize, as per Section 103 of the Home Rule Charter, the town council to enter into negotiations for the purpose of acquiring property or a portion of said property for municipal purposes located at Plant 40, Lot 83, and to further authorize the town council to pursue financing options as may be needed, but not to exceed limitations of Article 1." Article 1 of the warrant is a regular article that puts certain limitations, including a $300,000 limitation on items that aren't specifically in the warrant, which may come up during the year. So what concerned me a little bit about this is that the language in this, by whatever form of town meeting we propose, is not self-explanatory to citizens in terms of the the nature of the property, the nature of the municipal purposes, and what exactly we're asking authorization to do. And I worried about, for instance, I worry about if the council just approves its own budget with this in it without ever consulting the voters about a real estate transaction, which by charter is specifically, the right is specifically granted to voters to act on real estate transactions by the town. That was one point. And frankly, as a council member, and I've looked back at the history of this, I don't know enough about this to know whether I'd support it at this stage, based on the information that I've been given. And just to review the history quickly, I went back, back in November of 17th of 2019, in executive session, we did not see all these minutes. I'm reading from the public minutes.
Right.
We had a an item about the possible interest in acquisition of real property. "The council president briefed his fellow counselors on a matter that was presented to the town administrator for the town to consider purchasing a lot of land located within Little Compton from a property owner. We voted to ask the town administrator to return to the individual who made contact to him concerning a proposal to sell property to the town of Little Compton, asking the administrator to secure documentation that this individual has authority to speak on behalf of the property owner, suggest a counteroffer and return to the council at a future date. As best I can tell, we next took that up on February 20th when we were looking at and approving the warrant articles under our jurisdiction. And at that time, as I recall, that language appeared for the first time that I had seen that day. And the language I just read from the article. And the note in our minutes for that day is that "The council president reviewed the budget articles before the council, noting that the budgets are presented in the language for the warrant, noting in added articles to cover the potential offer and sale of real estate above the town transfer station, which is a placeholder without any clear action at the moment. All other items were reviewed prior to final consideration." Since then, and I don't recall, I didn't attend any Budget Committee hearings, but certainly on the the 12 or 14-minute public hearing, at which voters were not provided that document until the meeting, the voters have not seen that at this point. So the council doesn't know, speaking for myself, I don't know what this, I know what the property is, but I don't know what the what it is. We might, we're asking for authorization, but by the plain language of the article, we don't ask for authorization to purchase it. We ask for authorization to enter into negotiations and to pursue financing options as may be needed, but we don't specifically ask permission to complete the transaction. And I'm not sure that the proposal, as I'm recalling this, didn't, might not involve another piece of property that the town owns that is not mentioned in this article.
Right.
Point is that this is problematic on a number of counts and we might want to, I'm just sort of giving ourselves a head about how we proceed here in whatever form with this article. I'm a little concerned because I read it more closely. So I just wanted to bring that to the surface as a potential concern going forward as we prepare to present something to voters at town meeting.
The issue of how to present it in a virtual environment certainly is a different challenge. But the reason that the language is what it is, is this opportunity mirrors almost precisely the opportunity we had and executed to acquire the property immediately behind the maintenance garage for the purpose of public parking from a gift from the owner of the property. And at the time we went to financial town meeting, we used the same language or type of language to say, we have an opportunity which basically isn't mature yet. We'd like the authority to continue to negotiate. To your point about where, you know, where are we going to spend money, that sort of thing? That was early on in that process and the town administrator's review of this particular item. In both cases, the decision was the town, or the town council, or I should say, the administrator and the council president were unwilling to proceed further in an opportunity that required expenditure of money. So what we did was, we said, we own a slice of property that may be attractive to the proposers. We don't have any idea whether it is or not. We own that. What if we return to them with an offer to exchange those properties with no dollar value associated with it? We still need the town's approval to acquire property, but we had taken off the table, he and I at that point, the idea that we would propose spending any money for it. We were looking to exchange a piece of property for which we don't have a use for a piece of property immediately adjacent to the transfer station that we thought possibly had. Now, fast forward to today, even this week, we are still in conversation with another person who is key to that decision as far as the offerer is concerned. So it isn't even mature yet. I acknowledge fully that when it comes time for the financial town meeting, we need to have a clearer statement. It may be not a whole lot clearer, depending on the maturity of the comment, I mean, of the proposal, but we will certainly need to amplify on that. But that's the reason it's written that way.
I am concerned that we have not named another parcel that might require voter approval. We didn't specifically do that, so that, I'm a little concerned about this specificity of, I realize we didn't have all the facts. This is a placeholder. But somehow it will be, it concerns me that the level of information that we might, that we have at present and how we can presenting this in a reasonably transparent way on the fly at a town meeting. I just wanted to raise this. It's in the warrant. I just have some concerns about it. If we want to succeed with it, I mean, if we, if we, if people have a lot of questions and they're not satisfied, we might run the risk of not succeeding and getting approval. So I
Absolutely. And all we were hoping was that we didn't miss the opportunity by failure to include it in the warrant. So that's why we did it.
I understand that, yeah. That's, it's a comment I offer no other proposal at this point. I just wanted to.
Flag it as something we need to do. Thank you. The next item of business is a recommendation. Yeah, "Recommendation received from the Administrator, Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Town Solicitor regarding Rhode Island Road and Emergency Vehicle Access. Recommend notifying residents to clear their properties to the property line edge of the road as set by old ground markers and surveyor stakes, allowing the full width of the road to be utilized by public safety personnel." This is a topic in which liaison has begun. There has been a substantial discussion today, as a matter of fact, with two of the owners and clarification of the administrator's recommendation to the town council as to what was meant by clear to the property lines. It's not to say that all of the questions are answered. It's not to say that we're ready to send any equipment in to do anything. We're in conversation with the various owners of property to say, this is what we believe to be the boundary and it is the boundary of a town property. And so here's how we're proceeding. And much clarification occurred today, much additional activity occurred today, it's fair to say. Maybe either the solicitor or the administrator would care to comment on it.
There is also a member of the public that'd like to speak as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, town administrator.
First of all, I apologize for not being able to see my picture, but somehow I'm having a little difficulty with that. I can hear all of you well, but unfortunately, you can't see me. I'm not trying to hide today. The, yes, I'd like just to clarify a little bit on that. I think it was the two residents that I had the opportunity to speak today, certainly it was very clarifying and it was very helpful. Specifically, one individual who's been somewhat spearheading the communication for the other residents that are seasonal. And after about an hour and a half of conversation, myself and the building official was present as well, and Counsel Mataronis, but the exchange actually happened more, or the conversation, I should say, not exchange, was more between myself and the residents. And I think by the end of the conversation, it was much clearer what was the intent of what we need to do there. Because they're the ones, you know, the residents brought a concern, a safety concern to us. And as you instructed me to go ahead and have a survey done, I did so. And obviously, I provided a whole timeline on the communication. But with that being said, I think we just need to continue, well, I need to continue the conversation with the residents. With any other resident that may have additional questions. I think there is, I think it's a very easy solution and they agreed to, both of them, that what was being proposed by the town, once it was clarified, it was not any huge effort. It was a very simple solution.
Could I recognize the citizen who has a comment?
He has lowered his hand. I don't know if he still wants to talk. Mr. Bridgen, do you want to, wish to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So I've been an owner since 2004 on 11 Rhode Island Road. I'm a summer resident. I just really learned of all of this discussion and the potential action that was going to be, potentially could take place. So I have not been involved in any discussions. I never initiated any action. I didn't want any action with respect to changing anything on Rhode Island Road. So first, I'd like to be involved in the discussions moving forward. That's my first request. Two, I haven't seen any sort of written survey or any title report rendered on this subject, so I'd love to see that. I then need time to review that with council and a real estate expert. And I'd like the opportunity to do that. I think that's going to take at least 30 days and possibly 60 days before I can have an intelligent conversation about this. That's essentially where I'm at.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mataronis. I was in that discussion down there. I think there was quite a bit of misinformation about what was actually going to happen. It entails just cutting some bushes back and moving some boulders that are inhibiting parking on the east side of the road. I think everybody came back with a better understanding of what was actually going to happen. I did tell one of the resident participants that I would make a motion to continue this to the next council meeting and hopefully we could keep in discussion. My understanding, there is a survey that's supposed to be recorded in the town hall within the next couple of days. There is a survey being made that will be made available to the public. There are some stakes in the road down there where fortunately, where the stakes are, there's also some granite bounds that have been previously put in, and it looks like they've been put in a long time ago. And there's going to be, the tarred part of the road is going to stay where it is. All we're looking for some of the bushes to get cut back so safety vehicles can get to the end of the road in case there's any emergency required. No fences or no stone walls or anything else is going to be touched down there. So my motion would be that we allow the town administrator to keep going forward with this and also the solicitor with the legal people that were hired to benefit the residents. So we can come up with a amicable solution to this problem without costing anybody any money. So that would be my motion that we move it to the next meeting, continue to the next meeting. And hopefully the solicitor and town administrator can come up with some proposal that's amicable to everybody.
Just to clarify your motion, it is to continue it to the next meeting and you said proceed with, what are you suggesting we proceed with? Discussions and education and conversation? Or are you suggesting that in the two-week period between now and the next meeting, we would take removable action?
No, I wouldn't take any removable action. I want to do this as courteous as possible to everybody so that everybody's on board with it. So life is a counterpoint. Can keep going forward in a in a manner of satisfaction for everybody in a happy environment down here. The counterpoint is just too small to have factions fighting with each other. So I mean, Rhode Island Road has historically been used for access to Lloyd's Beach and, you know, to shut that road down to the people that use it, which is supposed to be just for Little Compton residents. I know that's, for some reason, there's other people that get down into there, but I'd like to try to get everybody on board with a plan that everybody's happy with. So my motion would be just to allow the town administrator, and I'd certainly So my motion would be just to allow the town administrator, and I certainly don't mind going down there, I have a lot of history there and get involved with discussions, but I'd like to come up with a solution that's going to make it so that down in that area, Secana Point, everybody's at peace with each other.
And to return to the next meeting with that.
And to return to the next meeting with any status of what's going on down there, a report from the town administrator.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
The motion's been seconded by Counselor Moore and the motion is that the administrator continue discussions assisted by the people that you've mentioned and that we return to a, to our next meeting, two weeks hence. And I would ask that Mr. Bridgen be specifically included in that, in that conversation so as to get his input and opportunity to learn what's being proposed and that they return to the next council meeting with a report. You ready to vote?
I don't think you can yet. There's someone, another member of the public that'd like to speak.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. President, maybe it's me, is, are you looking at me, Kara?
No. Actually, we're looking for Mr. Joseph to.
Mr. Joseph's microphone is unmuted. You should be able to go ahead, sir. We're not hearing anything from your end. Is it possible that you have a local mute of some sort?
I saw something happen. Yeah.
Now, how about that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Apologize. So my name is Paul Joseph and together with Dick Bordeaux, we were the two residents that spoke with Gary and with Tony and with Peter earlier today. And I want to just confirm the cordial nature of that discussion. And I know that Dick and I were operating under some misconceptions and it was very reassuring to hear from the representatives of the town that our kind of worst case scenario was not going to come to pass. So I just endorse the kind of going forward with the series of conversations so that everybody can be happy with what other solution is there. So I'm very appreciative of, of the opportunity to have talked, even though, as Gary said, it did take us a while. But as we do that, I just don't want to lose sight of the possibility of a solution that was broached last year, namely that there'd be parking along the road, along the end of Secana Point Road rather than only on Rhode Island Road. And that just be part of the conversation. That's, that's all. But generally speaking, I was very appreciative of the efforts of the town and the nature of that dialogue.
Thank you. Understand your concern and very much appreciate your, your comments regarding the process. You have, are there any other questions? Are you ready to vote?
I, I had a, I had a.
Yes.
This is Larry Anderson. First of all, I, I am frankly uncomfortable about doing anything about this. I, I knew that there had been a survey underway. I recall talking with the town administrator a number of months back about its availability. As of this moment, as I'm being asked to vote on something, I have not seen this survey. I have, it's not been presented to me. I, I don't know the, the, the information on which it's, on what it's based. So I, I'm, I, I, this, this was presented to us originally as a public safety matter. The representation now is that the clearing would address that. I, I assume it will. I guess I have some concerns about how it will. It's not clear to me. I haven't heard from the police and the fire chief. I know Tony would have been in touch with them. So I, I am, you know, I'd be happy with just tabling the thing until we had some more information. And the other who I'm going to raise, which will not, which I'm sure will not be appreciated but in a way, but I have to ask, does, does council member Mataronis, is your property abut or is it adjacent to Rhode Island Road?
My property is on Bluffhead Avenue.
No.
Okay. Which isn't any part of the discussion we have now.
Well, is it, is it adjacent to Rhode Island Road? It was, is it, is it affected by this?
No.
I, I would, I will assume that is, you, you have, my concern is that, that, that there are ethics commission advisories about decision making with regard to abutting and a, and nearby properties. And I, I wonder if it would be fruitful for, for all of us if you sought an advisory opinion as to your, your participation in this. I, I, I think that, you know, it's an area where we can all bend over backwards. I, I just raised that as a concern.
Well, Council Mataronis, I don't believe I'm going to get any financial gain out of it. All I'm trying to do is keep the neighborhood happy down there. Okay? There was a safety issue when the chief of police and the fire chief went down there with all the encroachment that's on the road. Yes, in fact, it looked like there was a problem because the road's only 10 feet wide. But there's, the road is actually 33 feet wide. If we get rid of some of that encroachment, I don't think there's going to be a safety issue down there. It seemed like all the gentlemen, as you just heard from Mr. Joseph, that he won't go forward. I'm not making any recommendation to do anything. I'm just going to continue it for two weeks. What's going to happen if we continue it for six days? We're going to be in the first of August and what are we going to do in that amount of time? Is we just going to allow no parking there and spread all the rest of the parking all over Secana? It's a, it's a mess down here. The last three weeks, it's been horrible down here and I foresee it's going to get worse this summer because everybody's coming out of the city to go to Secana Point. So I'm trying to work with the neighbors and come up with a solution. No, I'm not going to get any financial gain out of it. If I wanted to get financial gain out of it, I would go ahead and ask the road to be closed and I would park cars on my lot down there, $20 a car. But I'm not looking for financial gain. I'm trying to get it so everybody's happy, everybody's peaceful, up to a solution and get back whoever's supposed to be.
Does, thank you. Does your concern, Counselor Anderson, extend to the motion before us or to the principle in general? Are you, are you?
Well, I, I made my point on the motion. I'm, I'm thinking about how I'm going to vote on the motions.
All right. Are, are there any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that, you know, we haven't seen the survey on this yet. I mean, I will support the motion to continue having conversation with the residents down there, but I think before the next meeting, we should have, have all the documents in front of us if we have to make any more decisions about this. And I also want to note, you know, we obviously haven't heard from the chiefs yet. I don't know if this proposal is a total solution to the issue. You know, Council Mataronis has noted that, you know, it just gets busier and busier down there every summer. And, you know, I think this is just a, a part of the solution. You know, we're going to have to keep talking about other ways we can make sure that the road is safe, not just for the people visiting the beach, but for the residents down there going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't think we were going to have an in-depth discussion as, as, as I spoke with the administrator this morning, Mr. Bordeaux's lawyer has requested a continuance. And so although I think some of the comments have been enlightening, I don't think there should be any vote other than to just to continue it out for, for two weeks.
Very well. Counselor Mataronis, as the originator of the motion, are you willing to modify your motion to the advice of the solicitor?
I think that's what my motion was, to continue it for two weeks and continue to have the town administrator continue discussion with the residents to come up with a solution and report back to the council in two weeks.
Very well. Does that satisfy your concerns, Solicitor?
It doesn't need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion then is made and seconded and discussed. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to include the building official as one of the participants, you know, to assist with me in the discussions with the residents.
I think you have the flexibility to include whomever works for you to be part of that discussion.
Thank you.
A roll call of those voting on the motion. Counselor Anderson?
No.
Counselor Mataronis?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Mushin votes yes. Three to one, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item of business is a letter from the Beach Commission offering insight on their proposed operation and their COVID-19 protocols. Let me just quickly summarize what the Beach Commission has decided in conjunction with the state decision to authorize the opening of beaches. South Shore Beach will be open weekends and Memorial Day through June 20th. Hours of operation, oh, and then full time from June 20th to September 7th. Operation, hours of operation are at 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. A permanent gate is going in. No vehicles will be allowed on the beach during closed hours. Only Rhode Island residents are allowed on the beach. Out of state Little Compton residents who get a beach sticker will be allowed. The capacity of the parking lot will be dropped to 50% so as to comply with social distancing regulations. And the staffing is, have all been given COVID-19 training or will be receiving it. And all youth activities at South Shore Beach will be canceled until further notice. That's my quick summary. Are there any questions regarding beach operations? To make it simple, at 8 o'clock the day after tomorrow, the beach is open for a period of 10 hours until 6:00 PM, at which time the gate will be shut and locked and it'll be opened again Sunday morning at 8:00 AM and closed again at 6:00 PM. That's that right. Questions on that?
This is a council member Anderson. Has the, has the gate been installed?
It, it is in progress. If it's not installed, it will be by tomorrow.
And, and I, I support the Beach Commission's plan. I thought, I think they've, you know, given it thought in, in a careful way and have, I support this. My, my only concern is about the, and I am in favor of a gate. I'm just wondering, in light of our past action on this, which was really, as I recall, not done by vote when we agreed to support their proposal to, to close, to close the parking, I recall. Is, is there any council action required here or is this informational? My specific question is, I'm looking at the charter and the Beach Commission's charge is that the council has responsibility from regulation of travel to, from and over such beaches. Is there, is there any action required or that we should take to endorse, say, the gate or their plan, especially where it involves parking and this gate, which is a sort of a major change?
Right. The police chief has authority to create no parking zones, that sort of thing. He can, he is able obviously to rescind that as well. He's been intimately involved in this discussion, so that will be coincident. What I will need to do tomorrow is to rescind the emergency proclamation that closes the beach and instead it will be under the purview of the Beach Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. The next item is a set of three documents. Two are policies and one is a COVID-19 control plan. Each of these three documents, a written information security policy, a cybersecurity policy, and a COVID-19 control plan are written in response to external inputs to us that say, you need to have such a thing. In the case of the COVID-19 control plan, municipalities are not obligated to treat their town halls with a plan as a business does, but we're using that as both a model and an example and it's, does what we need to have done anyway. So the three documents that are in front of you, the first two are relatively boilerplate that were provided by our insurer and by, the WISP is by our insurer. I don't remember if the data breach notification plan was the trust as well. I think it was. And then the third one, of course, is provided by the state through its reopening Rhode Island. So I offer these. If you've had the opportunity to review them, I, I would recommend that we endorse them as being policy and, and programs of the town, specifically within the administration of the town. If you'd like to have more time, we put them in effect for our employees. If you'd like to wait and endorse them at some future time, that's also acceptable. But what's your pleasure? Yes, Solicitor?
I think you should endorse them. It's a great first step. They're very effective, they're very short, very easy to understand, and I think you need to endorse them now. Should they need to be revised thereafter, you can do so, but I think it's a good idea to do it now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there then a motion to endorse the Written Information Security Program, Instant Response and Data Reach Notification Plan, and the COVID-19 Control Plan?
Council Mataronis, I'll make that motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Counselor Mataronis.
Counselor, Counselor Moore?
Your second's the motion. The motion then is made and seconded to endorse these plans. A roll call of the vote. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mataronis?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Thank you. The next item of business is to receive bid proposals for the road study and assessment of town roads to be used by the Highway Department for their annual paving program. And the clerk and I worked out this careful process by which, even though we're separated by a number of feet, we will still be able to open the envelopes. The good news is I'm not going to touch them, so they'll probably get done much quicker.
There are two bid proposals that have been received. Okay. First proposal is received from the firm Par Corporation. Total bid proposed is $44,745. Second proposal is received from the Beta Group, Beta Group. And their proposal is $19,400.
All right, thank you. I'd entertain a motion for the town administrator and Director Public Works to return to the council with a recommendation.
Council Mataronis, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Mataronis, seconded by Counselor Moore. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Counselor Anderson?
Oh, I'm ready to vote. I, I was going to say aye.
Counselor Anderson, are you ready to vote? Yes. Counselor Anderson, aye.
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis?
Aye.
Counselor Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Four, zero. Thank you. The next item is to receive.
Counselor Mataronis, on this new business to say, where it says reopening, reopening our eye, I know this went to the town. I thought the town administrator and I discussed this. Is this supposed to be sent out to restaurants and whatnot for, for them to fill out?
Yes.
So that they would have?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so that's going to be?
That has been.
And that's going to be sent up? Okay, very good. He and I would discuss.
That's not up to us to send it out. That's handled by the state.
Right.
Okay.
Business regulations got that.
Well, I know that Tony and I discussed it. We were trying to figure out what businesses in town we should send it to. So, okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Administrator.
Okay, if I may, just a point of clarification. I know exactly what Councilman Mataronis is referring to. It's the PACA to inform them as of any assistance in also outdoor dining. That's the PACA that we're referring to.
Okay, thank you, Tony. I appreciate that.
Thank you. The next item of business is to receive spring mowing proposals.
We have received a single bid. And it is from RM Construction, Rich McGee and Son Excavating for a total bid of $8,400 for the spring mowing.
I'd entertain a motion to award based upon a review by the administrator and Director Public Works that it is appropriate pricing. Seems to me to be that way, but give them the opportunity.
Counselor Mataronis, I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, seconded by Counselor Moore. Are you ready to vote? Oh, Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mataronis?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Motion carries. Next is a letter of interest received from Michelle Stecker, offering to serve on the Recreation Committee.
Motion to approve Michelle Stecker to be appointed to the Recreation Committee. Counselor Mataronis?
I'll second.
Motion is made by Counselor Mataronis, seconded by Counselor Moore. To appoint. Any further discussion? Counselor Anderson, go ahead.
May I just ask, was, was this a solicitation because there was a vacancy or, remind me, or we advertised this?
No, this is a longstanding vacancy of, if I recall, Ron Vogel was the vacancy. And so it's been open for some time. I did ask the Recreation Committee Chair if he had any other applicants, if he was aware of any other applicants and had any comment on this applicant, and he said no to either. So he's aware of the fact that this is. Sir, are you ready to vote? What is your vote, Counselor Anderson? Counselor Mataronis?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Thank you. Consent filed.
Motion to place consent, counsel on file, and say anybody would like to pull anything. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Counselor Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis?
Aye.
Counselor Moore?
Aye.
Mushin, aye. Payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills as written. Counselor Mataronis?
Second.
Motion made by Mataronis, seconded by Moore to approve as written. Further discussion? All in favor? Counselor Anderson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mataronis?
It's frozen.
Frozen and, frozen in time, not moving.
Aye. Aye.
Counselor Mataronis?
Aye.
That's four. Motion carries. Any further matters before us?
Second.
Counselor Mataronis, motion to adjourn.
Second.
This motion is made and seconded to adjourn. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mataronis?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Mushin is aye. Thank you very much. Thank you to those who've remained with us.
I'd like to concur with that. Thank you very much. We have better turnout on Zoom than we do with the actual meetings. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks to the clerk.
You're welcome.